Good evening. Welcome to the Monday, April 15th, West Fargo City Commission Meeting. Please rise and join me for Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. Do this flag. The United States of America, considered by the British Thames, one nation, forgot individual, the thirteen justices across.
Thank you. Next order of business is approve the order of the agenda. Commissioners, respectfully, I'd like Item F on the consent agenda moved to 11A on the regular agenda, please. Are there any other changes or amendments to the order of the agenda?
I have been.
Thank you, Commissioner Simmons. Been moved. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Jurdavich. Been moved and seconded to approve the order of the agenda with one amendment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next order. Approval of minutes from April 1st, 2019, pages three through seven, and they have been distributed.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Jurdavich. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Thorstedt. Been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of April 1st, 2019, as distributed. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next order. Building permits, as distributed. Is there any questions or changes to the building department activity report?
Make a motion to approve.
Mr. Jurdavich moves. Commissioner Simmons, seconds. Been moved and seconded to approve the building permits as distributed, April 15th. Is there further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Next order of business, the consent agenda. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Simmons, seconded by Commissioner Jurdavich. Been moved to approve the consent agenda, noting again that Item F has been moved to 11A on the regular agenda. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Regular agenda. First item on the business, order of business is the Neighborhood Revitalization Program Kickoff. Mr. Larry Wile. Mr. Wile.
Your Honor, members of the commission, at the last city commission meeting, we introduced the program, Neighborhood Revitalization Program for the city of West Fargo, and it's basically a partnership between the city and Gate City Bank to help homeowners to improve their homes, help revitalize the neighborhoods north of Interstate 94. And this evening, Gate City Bank is here with the presentation, so with that. I'd like to go with Gate City Bank.
Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Brandy Hugan, and I'm the retail manager at Gate City Bank. A cornerstone of Gate City Bank's mission is to serve our customers and to connect with their communities while providing a better way of life. Today, I would like to speak about how the Neighborhood Revitalization Program offered by Gate City Bank does just that. Since 2003, Gate City Bank has made 12 million available in low-interest loans for the NRI program in the city of Fargo. This year, we just gave back another 2 million. Since 2005, Gate City Bank has made 6 million available in low-interest loans for the NIP program for the city of Morehead, and this year, we contributed an additional $2 million in funding to low-interest loans. The Neighborhood Revitalization Program is a program designed to improve a specific neighborhood quality of life and encourage investment in the city's existing neighborhoods. Gate City Bank's investment in the program has made a significant impact in the city's effort to maintain its affordable housing stock in addition to stabilizing the neighborhoods. The City of West Fargo Neighborhood Program is established for the city of West Fargo homeowners to encourage the preservation of homes and to add long-term value in the life of their property and neighborhood. We are thankful for the opportunity to help build a better way of life for our friends and neighbors residing in the city of West Fargo. Gate City Bank is excited for the opportunity to provide 1 million to the city of West Fargo 's Neighborhood Revitalization Program to focus on the initiative in the West Fargo community. I have some handouts here with information regarding the program that I can hand out after we're done presenting the checks. The deadline to apply for this program is October 31st. Thank you for having us, and I'm open to any questions at this time.
Are there any questions for Ms. Hugan? Thank you.
All right. Can we present the check at this time and take a quick photo?
Sure.
Yes.
Awesome. Thank you.
Is that down there?
Do you want me to stir out or just let you do? Okay, that way you give the floor.
Who's going to take your picture for Melissa?
Larry.
We're volunteering, John.
Carol, turn it in for today.
I thought it was pretty funny personally. I walked in and she were already.
Mr. Thorstedt has a question.
Larry, how are we going to let the citizens of West Fargo know about this? I know Wendy did an article on it, which we appreciate, but certainly want to get the word out so they take advantage of the program.
Yes, sir. Word has been getting out. Most, up to this point, have been reading the article in the newspaper. We've gotten a number of calls, about a dozen calls so far. We actually had three applications that were turned in today. The information daylighted on our website last week, I believe, on Friday, and so some people have already reviewed it on the website and given us a call, so.
Excellent. Do you have anything else for us, Larry, on this particular project?
That should be it for this, this evening.
All right. Thank you. Next order of business is to review the Fargo Transit Agreement. Mr. Wile.
Yes. At the last meeting, committee was directed to review information with the Fargo Transit Authority folks, and so we had a meeting on April 8th. Commissioner Jurdavich and Commissioner Olson were there, as well as Administrator Tina Fisk and myself, and representatives from the city of Fargo. We talked about having an objective of really trying to maximize the efficiency of the ridership for the bus routes in West Fargo. We visited about some potential alternatives, ranging from doing some tweaks on the existing two routes to potentially putting one route, one route together with other pulsing stations. A lot more review is taking place on that. We scheduled another meeting in May for us to get together and review that more thoroughly. So there is some review and evaluation going on for the current routes to see how we might be more effective in that. The current route, 20, that is, in the older part of West Fargo, is running pretty efficiently. The other route, however, is a new route, and it's been running about a year now, and has a lot of progress to be made, given that, to get to the same level as our older route. The older route's been around, gosh, I'm guessing nearly 20 years already, and about a year ago, there was a change in that route to reversing it counterclockwise to try to better accommodate people that were going to Walmart. And we've had a lot of positive reaction to that, that we've had some concerns where residents have had to, you know, make some changes to across the street or whatever and get used to a different route direction, but by and large, the route has been received very well, and the ridership has held up strong. I guess Commissioner Jurdavich may have some additional comments or thoughts on that?
Yeah, you know, I think, you know, in the meeting, there was agreement, I think, by everybody that Route 24 isn't cost-effective and that we need to look at alternatives, and I think, you know, there's agreement from all parties that we're going to do that our next meeting, you know, going to be scheduled in May. And with that said, I think, you know, we're already four months into 2019, so I think the 2019 agreement needs to, I mean, because it might take us months to come up with what the right alternative is. That said, I do think this is a discussion that should have been happening in, like, I don't know, September or October of last year versus getting halfway through this year, and I think that's advice for the 2020 agreement that will eventually come in front of us.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I would like to say a couple things, Mayor. First, I do not like, Mr. Jurdavich, like you said, the $15, $19 a seat is way out of line, Larry, for that price, and that route has been around a year. I do not like what they did to the high-rise. The very people that need that, it makes it more complicated for them. I don't think they look, they had mentioned that night they were here, Larry, that they didn't know about that, and I know they did, because we had meetings about it and discussed it. So that upsets me. As far as the 2019 contract, you know, that's not our fault that they didn't come to us when they should have, and did their due diligence. I think to sign a contract tonight is like saying, if you purchase a house, you just sign away and don't care about the particulars. I mean, I think, I think whenever we sign a contract, we have to know what's in the contract, and so I, and somewhat I disagree with you here on that, but I respect your pity, and I appreciate that you did meet with them.
I neglected to mention to all of you folks this evening that Commissioner Olson is not with us, as he had a procedure today, medical procedure, and so his doctor advised him not to be out and about, so. Mr. Thorstedt?
Yeah, I guess I'm glad that we're meeting with them and going to continue to be with them, because I'm still not comfortable on how they factor our share of the cost when you simply look at miles driven within a border. That's not looking at income, that's not looking at ridership, that's not looking at anything else outside of the simple way to figure out how much pro-rate they cost. So I'm glad we're talking about, I know what you're saying, Commissioner Simmons, about, you know, agreeing to it. I guess it's, I'm not saying it's right, because it's obviously hasn't been right, and we've agreed with this in the past. We're kind of into this contract here already, now reluctantly go along with it, but I say there's got to be a change in how this is handled going forward when it comes to contracts. And I concur with you, Commissioner Simmons, also, on, they should be trying to establish the stops, for instance, high-rise, which is a very popular, and of course, deals with a lot of people with, you know, physical challenges and stuff like that. Instead of saying, wow, this is what all works for us, they need to work with what works for the people and works with us as well. If that means changing the route a little bit or something, let's do that to do it better. And I think, again, if we're going to have discussions about it, I think that's a positive move, because, at least my experience in the past, they just come and say, here, pay this mountain, we've kind of said, okay, right, so. Again, I'll reluctantly go ahead and knowing that staff and Commissioner Jurdavich is working with them to develop a better program.
I concur completely. I did the math prior to, and that's when I requested of Mr. Wile to have those folks come in and see us, because doing the mathematics, it certainly makes you lean in one direction, that this is not good for the city of West Fargo and spending taxpayer dollars. So I agree both with your comments and the Commissioner Simmons, and again, Mr. Jurdavich's, Commissioner Jurdavich's comments are absolutely correct, too, that we do have one route that is functioning very well, and we need to move forward, and with the idea that we certainly have to have additional discussions on this, without a doubt, because there certainly is a need. The ridership on Route 20, is it?
Yes.
Is great for our citizens.
With the knowledge that we're going to be working towards a more effective route, I would make a motion to approve the agreement that we're already four months in on.
All right. For a second, please.
I'll second.
Second, Commissioner Thorstedt. Moved by Commissioner Jurdavich. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of the Fargo Transit Agreement for 2019, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on. Item number three is the second reading of ordinance number 1119, alcoholic beverages. Mr. Shockley.
Good evening, Mr. President of the commission and members of the West Fargo City Commission. Included in the updated packet was the changes between the first reading and the second reading that were based upon discussion that was had at last, not the last commission meeting, but the meeting before. I'll just briefly cover those changes. So the first change would be on page three of the draft ordinance for second reading, is that we've adjusted the definition of what it means to be authorized on the premises, so a person can be authorized by a member of the residence. We've added in a definition of public facilities, so it goes through the ordinance and makes more clear what the public facilities are. There was a lot of discussion regarding setting the fees by resolution. We have included that in now in the updated ordinance, that they would be set by resolution rather than by ordinance, so it's easier to change the fees. We have a draft resolution that was included. We'd want to, if the commission wants to approve the ordinance, we would have the resolution on the next commission agenda, but I just wanted to include that. We changed the two non-voting members of the Liquor Control Board simply to advisors, so they're not, they're non-voting advisors rather than members, so they actually wouldn't be on the board, they would just simply be advisors. We did add in on page 10 regarding the fitness of the applicant. That would include, any relevant business history would be considered a factor. And then we also cleaned up a section regarding the proximity of schools and institutions. We got rid of the funeral home provision, added in public facilities or property rather than public buildings. And then, yeah, and then on page 15, we cleaned up other, we added in a provision regarding the state of North Dakota or any other government entity to sell alcoholic beverages. And then the last cleanup was regarding the administrative fine structure, where we merged in, previously, we had a section four for the fourth and fifth violation, which were very similar in the penalty, and simply deleted those sections and renumbered. And then finally, we added some cleanup language in regarding the avenues, including Christiansen Drive and 21st Avenue West, and then made it clear that a licensed establishment location, they're subject to the discretion of Liquor Control Board, so if there was a area that would be allowed, but the board determines in its discretion that it's not appropriate to put a establishment there, then that board would have description. We also cleaned up the definition of cabaret licenses, specifically to address new, more modern forms of types of entertainment that could be posted on the television. And then we cleaned up a few other sections, and specifically, the law has changed regarding whether or not it is a Class A violation and turned it into a Class B misdemeanor, as provided under the North Dakota Century Code. So I can answer any questions, but there was quite a few substantive cleanups between the first and second reading, all of them reflect the discussion that we had at the meeting about four weeks ago.
Thank you, Mr. Shockley. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Shockley? What is your pleasure?
Make a motion to put it on second reading.
Thank you, Commissioner Thorstedt. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Simmons. Been moved and seconded to put it, the ordinance number 1119, alcoholic beverages, on second reading. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next order of business is the second reading of zoning ordinance amendment to section 4-427-A-C-OP, Commercial Office Park District. Mr. Silber.
Thank you, Your Honor. There's been no changes from the first reading on this, tonight's no changes, so I recommend approving second reading.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, Mr. Silber? Done. What's your pleasure, Commissioner? Make a motion to approve. Mr. Simmons moves. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Jurdavich. Been moved and seconded to approve, go to the second reading of zoning ordinance amendment to section 4-427-A-C-OP, Commercial Office Park District. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number five on the regular agenda is the second reading of rezoning and final plot approval of Eaglewood Seventh Edition. Mr. Silber.
Thank you, Your Honor. This was last seen for first reading on December 3rd of 2018. The applicant here is finishing up the Eaglewood development. It does follow the area plans that were previously provided. It would develop 83 new single-family residential lots, all being zoned R1SM. Subject recommendations have been met, and staff is recommending approval of the final plat, along with second reading of zoning ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Silber. Any questions for Mr. Silber? What is your pleasure?
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Simmons. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Jurdavich. Been moved and seconded with the second reading and rezoning and final plot approval of Eaglewood Seventh Edition. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next order of business is item number six on the regular agenda, the second reading of the rezoning and final plot approval of the Wilds Eleventh Edition. Mr. Silber.
Thank you again, Your Honor. This is, was last, excuse me, August 20th of 2018. We did have a lot of things, we kind of were trying to wrap up regarding the improvements here. There was 404 permit needed as well, that Dustin had to finalize, that allowed drainage to make its way up to the northwest. All of that has been taken care of. Just two, or I say, one, probably one item I want to just address on this, is that we are working with the city of Horus to continue to make sure that that connection is made to the south to 64th Avenue. This subdivision, however, that's being proposed here, does not connect into that necessarily. This all connects up into the northwest portion of the area. We have talked a little bit in the past about inventory of lots, that's not as much of an issue. They did revise the development to include R1SM, R1, and R2 lots, who brought it back to Planning Commission. They reviewed it, had no issue before we held that first reading. So that's sort of the short of the history to that. They've met all the conditions as proposed, and staff is recommending approval of final plat and second reading tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Silber. Any questions for Mr. Silber? Mr. Jurdavich.
One quick question. The existing property there, that is in the city of West Fargo, correct?
Mr. Jurdavich, yes, it is, and we have a 30-foot lot provided within the development that would provide access to them. Our staff has met with them, as well as the developer. They are, they have been made aware of the regional special assessments that will be impacting the property. They are given an opportunity to develop it in the future, however, at this point, they don't want to do anything.
Okay.
So the 30-foot access, or the 30-foot lot will be adequate access, and then there's also easement on both sides of that, to provide that kind of buildable area that we might need in case we have to run sewer, water, redo a road, et cetera.
Mr. Silber, do you have any knowledge about the meetings between the developer and the city of Horus with regard to 64th? Timelines of when that might be, see those type of improvements? It's a critical part of this Eleventh Edition.
Absolutely. Well, it's, in our mind, it is, and our agreements that we've written have tied them to a requirement to provide a minimum gravel road on Ninth connecting down to 64th. They've also provided the right-of-way to get to the right-of-way that's already existing in Horus. What we've sort of determined with discussing with the city administrator of Horus is that when Wilds 12th comes in, that's it. At that point, that has to be done, and there would be no more kicking the can. We've kicked the can for the last time, I think, on this development. This one, again, like I said, is on the northwest corner. There's not a tremendous amount of lots. What they propose with the next addition will be that they'll bring in the rest of them, and that'll really be a tremendous amount of density that we don't want to see just on 52nd. And also, this area is in the Legacy Elementary School District, which is part of the new high school, so we're going to see a lot of people wanting to find a way to head south, not necessarily head north. So it's gonna, there's a lot to come on that. We have them tied to requiring that, at very minimum, there's going to be a connection, but at this point, no, there's not, it's not completed, won't be done this part of the 11th, unless, of course, you want to hold off on approving this final tonight, and we can continue to push and get some more done. I'm not sure what we can do beyond what we've already had them agree to within the 7th, 8th, 9th, and 10th agreements, but.
Well, being the street isn't, is in the city of Horus, we have no jurisdiction, but we do have some, if you could communicate again to the developer, that'd be greatly appreciated.
Yeah.
That this is an imperative, imperative part of this whole development, we have to have a second way, means of getting out of there, and your thoughts are exactly in line with mine with regard to, you know, the new middle school, the new high school going on there. It's going to be imperative that 64th be developed.
And the city engineers provided, to our city engineer Dustin Scott, estimate of costs, respecting, of course, that we can't build a road in their jurisdiction, and we can't assess our property owners for a road in Horus, but as a development occurs, we can work with them to try to find some common ground and get this done, so.
I'd just ask that you communicate to the developer one more time, please.
Of course.
Commissioners? Move the second reading.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Jurdavich. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Thorstedt. Been moved and seconded to approve the second reading of the rezoning and final plot approval of the Wilds Eleventh Edition, with the direction of Mr. Silber will contact the developer and emphasize the importance of improving 64. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number seven, regular agenda, is to review the Renaissance Zone application for Ninth and Main LLC. Mr. Hahn.
Excuse me, I can't see that far away, apparently. Thank you, Commissioner, present commissioners. The property under consideration today is located in an active Renaissance Zone 33 on the corner of Main Avenue and Ninth Street, highlighted here in our current Renaissance Zone map. There are two buildings planned for this project, the north building being 200, 2,500 square feet. They're envisioning it being used for either warm or cold storage. The south building on the lots right along Main Avenue will be 47,000 square feet roughly, and they're looking to accommodate more of the industrial-type retail shops. Their estimated value is $14 million. That's made its value of $14 million for the investment of the two buildings together. The current lot is assessed at a little over $1.8 million, which they will continue to pay taxes on throughout this incentive. If approved, they expect to break around the spring. This incentive spans over five years. Each year, the abatement will be $203,392 for a total of $1,016,960 over those five years. The $26,262 per year in taxes will continue to be paid by the developer throughout the incentive. This shows here the current lot as well as preliminary renderings for both the north and south building. The EDAC recommended approval at the April 3rd meeting, and I am available for questions, and I believe the applicants are here as well. Thank you.
Commissioner Roth. Any questions, Commissioners?
I guess I have a comment that I just want to make, Mayor, if I could, and maybe Cassie or Tina or Chris or anybody that knows. But, three years back, we put millions and millions of dollars into Main Avenue to redo that road, to make it a nice-looking road, a nice path to our community through our city. And I guess I don't know either way which way to go, but is this the way we really want to go, is cold storage and with units? I mean, they look nice, but is that the path that we intended to go on when we redid Main Avenue? And, you know what I'm saying? I mean, is this, is this the vision that we had back then, when we spent those millions of dollars to have cold storage? And old 7-Elevens, and, I mean, I know, and again, either, Tim, maybe you can help me out. I just want people to know that there are other options, or there's things we should at least explain why we're doing this.
Of course. I will say we have had extensive conversation with the applicants, at least that, that building right along Main Avenue. To keep in mind, we expect a certain level of aesthetics with the building, so I will say that. I'll let Tim join in as well.
I didn't want to jump on Kelly's presentation. I totally wouldn't do that. But, the, what I did want to add, the property was already zoned industrial. So, in some cases, we have a process, and I'm going to be talking about that later, of entitlement, where you're entitled to develop what you can develop in a property. But I said at EDAC is that what we're doing here is incentivizing. So, there's two different things here, incentivizing versus entitlement. So, if they walk in the door tomorrow to get a permit, they get permit. So, that's where the, our vision of what we may have for that is not necessarily legally what we can restrict them from.
Right, I understand that.
But incentivizing is a totally different thing.
But in this case, we can.
Yeah, so that's all. I just wanted to clarify as you're thinking about that. As far as 2.0 didn't necessarily say this is going to be this and this is going to be that. It really talked about it being a job, sort of, a workforce area. So, you know, this, the big fridge probably isn't a good workforce area, but...
I just want someone to tell me, is this the right thing to do or not? That's all. And that's the bottom line. I just, you know, want some conversation about it, just to say, is this, you know?
Well, as proposed, if they follow through that, that, that's an upgrade over...
What's there now? Exactly. It looks very nice, but...
At least it's not a steel building, you know, just a whip-up steel building. The reality is, that's a tough area to do anything with. The tank farm's going nowhere. It's been there forever, and it's going to be there as long as it's a functional operation. And some of the other businesses there, the auto auction, I mean, they're, they're industrial or heavy commercial-type operations. And, you know, we could put a beautiful building there and a whatever, and it'd still be surrounded by other types of businesses. So, I guess I'm glad to see that they're, they're doing something better than just throwing up a steel building or something, and trying to make it aesthetically better in the area.
Anyone else? All right. What is your pleasure?
Make a motion to approve it.
Thank you, Commissioner Thorstedt. Is there a second, please?
A second.
Commissioner Jurdabek. It's been moved and seconded to approve the Renaissance Zone application for Ninth and Main LLC. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number eight is to review the automatic aid agreement with Fargo Fire. Chief Fuller.
Good evening, Commissioner President, Dard, and members of the commission. Before you tonight is a automatic aid agreement between the City of Fargo Fire Department, the City of West Fargo Fire Department. It covers the areas of Deer Creek and part of our Shadowwood neighborhood. The actual jurisdictional boundaries here for West Fargo is south of 36th Avenue, south of 40th Avenue, between Veterans Boulevard and Fourth Street East, east of the Cheyenne River, south of 40th Avenue, and north of 52nd Avenue to Fargo Corporate City Limits, otherwise known as McManus Estates. And Fargo, south of 52nd Avenue to Veterans Boulevard, to the West Fargo and Horace Corporate City Limits. The agreement would allow for automatic aid of Fargo Fire Department units to come into West Fargo, and for West Fargo Fire Department units to go into the Fargo area. The reason behind this is the 52nd Avenue project in Fargo is blocking access. Our Cheyenne Street project is blocking access. So, we're going to share this area and work forward to make sure that we have good response signs for both departments. Chief Steve Dirksen is here with me. If you have any questions for Stephen myself, we're open to answering them.
Questions? Comments?
I just think it's fantastic, Chief, that you two are working together like this and making this work. This is what bringing you on board is all about. This is what being, it's all that vision.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Yep, this is a great thing for both, both communities and both fire departments, and I think it's going to lead to bigger things in the future, so...
I listened to Chief Dirksen the other night about the Fargo City Commission. Is this is the first one in the history of the state of North Dakota where there's an automatic aid situation like this?
Yep, and we chose to use that language because we, in the case of a medical call, one of his fire trucks will be coming, so say Cheyenne High School. There won't be a West Fargo Fire Unit coming. It'll just be Fargo Fire Department. And in the case of Deer Creek, it'll just be West Fargo Fire Department coming into Fargo. That's the first one that we know of that's actually to the point where the two departments aren't going to their call or letting the other department share in that responsibility. So, yep.
I think that the citizens of Deer Creek and Shadowwood should be very happy with that. It's, it's great collaborative effort, and I congratulate you both, and thank you, Chief Dirksen, very much.
Thanks, sir.
All right. Any questions, more questions, Dan? All right. Thank you. What's your pleasure on the automatic agreed aid agreement, gentlemen?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Jurdabek. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Simmons. Been moved and seconded to approve the automatic aid agreement with the Fargo Fire. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, Chief.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Article number nine, Planned Unit Development Amendment for Southdale Second Edition, 20205, 8th Avenue West. Mr. Silver.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm just going to pull this up. Kelly sabotaged me because I came up here. Just kidding. This application was received to accommodate change to approved detailed development plans that we reviewed on October 2018 for the Cass County Housing Authority's redevelopment of their one-story multifamily buildings, which are just south of the high-rise. There are some revisions to the plans, so we asked that they come in with a PUD amendment. A PUD amendment provides for an additional public hearing so that we notify the public of these changes. I think they were significant enough that we should, we should look at them again so that the neighborhood doesn't have anything that surprises them. I'm going to just go through those real quickly. First, the pitched gabled roof was added to the east half.
I'll give it.
You and me thought it was our fault.
They added a pitched gabled roof to the east half of the building which faces Cheyenne Street. So, Cheyenne Street, which faces that, is still flat roof, but the side that faces inward is a pitched roof. The east building was changed from three stories to four stories and decreased in length. There was an enclosed parking structure added to that east end of the property where they decreased it in length. Elimination of the roadway and skyway connection between buildings, and now the buildings are fully connected. At one time, there were two separate buildings with a skyway. And then they revised the building appearance to include roof gables, window sizes, on the kind of the front entry there, and placement and exterior material selection. They also increased the number of residential units from 84 to 85. This PUD process allows the commissioner to, the commissions to discern if the proposed plan meets that same intent that was provided in the initial PUD. We were initially discouraged that the plan that they first found was to work very well with the downtown plan. Downtown plan was not workable. However, we feel that the applicant has made a significant effort to achieve a nice-looking development that continues to provide a good transition into downtown. The materials provided here are also of higher quality and durability than standard residential materials, and will be a significant lasting improvement from the current site. We notified property owners within 150 feet and received no comments. I did receive one phone call from a neighbor, and I tried calling back. His phone wouldn't accept phone calls again. Tried it again, it didn't. But he didn't show up at the public hearing. I had talked to him previously. He wasn't really concerned, just wanted to have some more information. So, I'm not too concerned that he was going to have any problems with it. After April 2nd meeting, Planning Commission held that public hearing, reviewed the application, and are hereby recommending approval with the conditions as noted in the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Silver. Are there any questions, Mr. Silver?
What might be the timeline on this project?
I would defer that question to Dan Mather from Beyond Shelter, who's a developer.
Mr. President, commission members. For the record, my name is Dan Mather with Beyond Shelter Incorporated, a co-developer with the housing authority. The current timeline is, is to go out to bid at the end of this month, and hopefully be working with the demolition part, or piece of it, in August, and start hard construction, putting some foundations in September for an opening 12 months after that, so fall of 2020.
Nice-looking project.
Mm-hmm.
Very nice.
I have to say that when I came back before the planning and zoning, I was at the meeting. The great efforts was made to improve. There's, there were two, a first look at it and then a second look at it, and I commend you for your efforts.
Yes, you know, when we started the process, we were really excited about what we could do. But when it's all said and done, budget matters, and the resources that the state had available for the project just weren't at the level. So, hopefully, with the compromises and the support here tonight, we can move forward and have a really big impact on that quarter in the downtown of West Fargo. We appreciate all the support.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Any questions? All right. What's your pleasure on the Planned Unit Development?
Make a motion to approve with the three conditions.
Thank you, Commissioner Simmons. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Mr. Thorstedt, second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the Planned Unit Development Amendment for Southdale Second Edition, 205 8th Avenue West, with the three conditions as noted. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next order of business is item number 10, Final Plot Approval for Hulberson's Industrial Park Fourth Edition, a replat. Mr. Silver.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would normally put this on consent. It's simply a replat of three already-zoned lots into two. However, there is just a note I wanted to make sure that I highlighted. They do have some, an outstanding, not, not necessarily a violation that we have cited them on, but a violation. Nonetheless, they have to do some sodding on the lot. There's some stormwater violations. We have notified them of that now, and they've committed to having those remedied by June 30th. There's some topsoil that they moved around to do some grading and just kind of took their time on it. So, I've added that. I would humbly ask that you add that as a condition of approval, that they have that done by June 30th, understanding that right now, not very easy to go out and grade a lot, but the development that they're proposing to the north, creating an extra lot. We want to add this as a condition to both lots, that they properly provide for stormwater provisions on there and grade their lot as is required. If they don't, we would cite them in violation immediately on June 31st, or I guess it'd be July 1st. And their plat would, I guess, I don't know if that would be null and void, but it's kind of a difficult thing here. They want to get the plat done so they can sell the property. They can't get out there and grade it, so it's more of a notification here than anything.
What we'd probably want to do is record the condition as, on the lot also, so that it would have to be satisfied before they could close.
Okay. I'm not too concerned about it. They didn't realize it was a big deal until we told them, so...
Is there a date, Tim?
June 30th.
June 30th is the deadline?
Yep.
So, if there's no other questions, I would make that motion that we put a fifth condition on there, stating that they get this area cleaned up with the sodding by June 30th of 2019? And if not, John, you see, you can also record it, right? Well, you just said, so it'll be on there, so it'll have to be done.
Right. We would record it on the property and the condition, Mayor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Jurdabek. Mr. Simmons moved to approve the Hulberson Industrial Park Fourth Edition replot with recorded conditions and the conditions of June 30th. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Silver.
Thank you.
Next order of business is item number 11, is the final plot approval. You've been a busy gentleman. Final plot approval for Forum Communications First Edition subdivision. Mr. Silver.
Thank you again, Your Honor, and this is the Forum Communications that Ms. Roth had presented earlier. The, as I said before, the zoning was already zoned industrial. However, they needed a plat to provide for future development opportunities. The right-of-way on the plat was developed as the city had recently acquired an easement to accommodate installation of some city infrastructure. So, there's a little bit more right-of-way on their plat than there is normally what would be to the east side of this. Respecting, of course, that the tank farm is there, and we really can't do anything about that. So, they, we have acquired that as an easement, and they're just putting it as right-of-way on a plat. So, now it will be dedicated to the public, and we can do other improvements within there outside of the easement that we had. The plat here divides, provides four lots for development, appropriate access and utility easements within that to properly service all lots. We did receive comments from the North Dakota DOT in regards to their preliminary master site plan that was provided. We did notify them of the hurdles respective to that, and I think what they've planned to do now through working with Dustin is no longer run any stormwater into that DOT retention pond. They're going to handle that to the north and then head it up into the Ninth Street ditch. So, it's kind of a preliminary plan, and then there'll be a future long-term plan that they'll have to do to accommodate all the drainage on the site. Access to the site is something that needs to be approved both on Ninth and Main by the commission. At this time, we're not asking for you to consider any access requests to that. We have been given a traffic impact study just today, so we haven't had a chance to digest that, and we need to look through that a little bit further. So, I expect in May you'll have that before you. The plat and the drainage plan, well, the plat is unaffected, the drainage plan is. So, there are, is a condition in there that the city engineer take into any consider, take into consideration any concerns by DOT as well as future development plans of the property prior to approving the drainage plan. So, if you approve the plat tonight, Dustin still has the opportunity to withhold his signature until he is satisfied on the drainage plan. I think that's it. After March 12th meeting, Planning Commission held a public hearing and reviewed the application, and are hereby recommending approval with the conditions as noted in the staff report. And I'm available for any questions, and Dustin could probably speak a little bit more to the access and drainage as well as Chris.
You stated that the commission has authority on the access on Main Avenue, because not the North Dakota DOT?
It's a little bit of a process. So, we provide, and Chris or Dustin, correct me if I don't have the procedure down correct completely, but we provide a recommendation to them. They have authority overall on Main, but we provide a recommendation. Ninth is a arterial roadway, and any collector or arterial roadway requires approval from the city commission. So, sometimes we put it on the plat, we'll put like access control on the plat, but it's not, it's kind of redundant. And sometimes it also can be funny, because if they move it 10 feet or otherwise, then it's not technically legal.
Thank you, Mr. Silver.
Couple of comments. I know we're not dealing with the site access right now, but that's my biggest concern, is that north access, they show it preliminarily here. I personally cannot live without it. I think, number one, it'd be a safety hazard. And I think there's a, there's a, there's a rise there as it hits the railroad track. There's a pretty steep ditch just to the north of that. We have a guardrail on it now. And those are even lesser concerns. My concern is, if you look at West Fargo 10 to 20 years from now, if, if we develop to the north, which we believe we will, access to that is going to be challenging. Right now, we have Ninth Street West, Fifth Street, and Ninth Street East, underpasses. Ninth Street, Ninth Street West are both small. They go through, one goes through a residential area, the other one... the other one kinda dead ends at Twelfth Avenue North. This Ninth Street slash Veterans is our only really true north to south roadway arterial. And I know in the past, we've talked about whether we wanna put an underpass in there or, you know, what we wanna do, even quiet zones have been talked about because the residents and we don't know what the, you know, the railroad, maybe it'll go away, maybe it'll increase, you know? But I think putting an access at that point, number one, I think it's a safety hazard, but I think it also takes away our options for putting in an underpass or doing other improvements as we may see fit at that location. So, like you say, that's gonna be probably a different matter of concern. I'm fine with the plat. I just wanna put that out there, that if it comes back with that on the site plan as it is, I personally won't go along with it, so.
Well, if I may, I'll address a couple of those things. As Tim mentioned regarding the safety concern with the plat and the site plans, we're gonna require a traffic impact study. So things like site distance and other functional characteristics with the driveway is gonna be vetted out through a traffic impact study that we'll review. We had similar concerns when Sands Hills started redeveloping and they were proposing some access points in close proximity to the railroad tracks up there. So we're gonna be looking for the same things, especially, you know, again, the site distance. Relating to the underpass and the quiet zone, we did recently start a corridor study with Ninth, Ninth Street through Metracog. The corridor study goes from Seventh Avenue East by the high school up to Twelfth Avenue Northeast. And some of the things that we have put into this corridor study are to evaluate a below grade crossing at the railroad tracks. And we've also shared with them the concerns that were brought forward about eight years ago, if I remember correctly, there were some requests for the city to put in quiet zones. So some of those things are gonna get evaluated through this corridor study process. What we have communicated to the developer is that we are in fact looking at things like access control and evaluating some of these other things with this corridor study. And so if it comes back that we need to control or restrict access or completely eliminate access on this street, they're aware that the city reserves the right to do so. In terms of where I think things could play out in thirty years, as this corridor study gets going, they'll certainly evaluate the conditions. But one thing to remember is that Ninth Street is not a truck route. Once you get south of Main Avenue, that might impact the viability or the feasibility or the need to put in an underpass, but at the same time, you're a hundred percent correct, there's only two north-south corridors through town. So I just would reserve that evaluation to be thoroughly embedded through within this corridor study, which is one of the main reasons why we're doing it, is to look at the traffic needs long-term. So, but, you know, as Tim mentioned, to get additional access onto an arterial road or a collector road certainly has to be approved by the city commission. So I think at a future date here, we're gonna bring back not only the traffic impact study that they're gonna be required to do, but hopefully our corridor study will have gotten to the point with having a little more detail on whether or not it's appropriate to have an underpass there or and/or just the access control in general through this corridor. So, anything to add? Tim, Chris, you wanna add anything?
I think it probably would've waited for that access control had it not been they're doing some transferring of property, et cetera. And they're comfortable enough that they will gain some access, probably right in, right out. We were pretty clear that probably right in, right out on Main, not a full or a three-quarter, and then on Ninth that they'll get access.
That's a big enough site, at least in my opinion, that they should be able to have traffic on-site and funnel it to
Yeah.
a main type entrance without having to have several entrances.
So they have
The problem is, is once they get the buildings up, they get their systems going, they get the parking in place and all that, going back and eliminating, it always creates a lot more problems than at least contemplating in advance.
Yeah.
Great points. Thank you, Mike. What is your pleasure?
Are you okay, Commissioner Thorsted, with moving forward at this point?
It comes to site plans and stuff, as long as we have the opportunity to take a look at and discuss it at a later date, I'm fine.
Okay. I completely agree.
I'll make the motion to approve then with the conditions.
Thank you, Commissioner Simmons. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Jurdabek, second. Been moved in seconded to approve the final plot approval for the Forum Communications, first edition, a subdivision. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. With conditions, Tim, if you would. Thank you, sir. Next order of business is item eleven A, above-ground fuels tank. That's item that was removed from the consent agenda, the consent agenda, and that was the conditional use permit for above-ground fuel tank at twenty-four thirty-eight Main Avenue West. Reason I asked that this be brought to the regular agenda is that this particular property owner doesn't meet what the standard city codes have been with setbacks from the property line. And you've addressed that very diligently, Tim, and I appreciate that. But if we're going to forego what those specifications have been in the past, should we not then take a look at the volume of the tank size, which is eleven thousand?
Five hundred.
Five hundred gallons? So my, you know, my thought is, is okay if we're going to have, allow them to have this tank and it doesn't meet the setback requirements, then should we not restrict the size of the tank?
Thank you, Your Honor. I apologize that this was on consent. I normally would put a conditional use permit on regular agenda to kinda go through it and have an opportunity for the public to be heard, even though there's not a public hearing scheduled. So with that, regarding to that, I apologize. The second part was sort of a creative way for us to provide for the setback. We spoke with, at the time, John couldn't be at our planning commission meeting in Bismarck, I believe, but Sarah Ware was there and we talked it over a little bit with her. So the property owner here that's applying for this owns this lot, they own a lot of this area in general, but they own this lot and they own the lot directly adjacent to it and they own in Cota Windows. This sort of all supports a lot of their business interests. So what we proposed was the conditional use permit ties the two lots together, therefore they beyond meet the setback requirements for above-ground fuel tank. They own both of them. I wouldn't do this if it weren't contiguous ownership. The other option would've been is that we could actually require them to plat the two lots together, therefore they would meet the requirements. A conditional use permit, we actually, at John's advice a few years ago, we started recording them against the property, so that when you do title search, the due diligence, you find out that this is in there. So what we propose here is that we actually tie this lot and this lot together through the conditional use permit, recorded against each property, so that then they meet the setback, they meet it forever. If they ever split the property up, we actually have within our conditional use permit to require them to remove that tank then. So we feel like we've came up with a good strategy for taking care of it. It allows them to get a conditional use permit without having the expense of plating, and we feel pretty good about it, but I'm happy to change that if the commission feels uncomfortable about that.
Can you remind me, how far apart are the diesel tanks and the gas tanks?
Um, they have, I believe, one tank in this. Let me double check here. Apologize, I was not a staff person doing this primarily, but
Well, they referenced diesel and they referenced gas.
Yeah. Del, do you recall the permit much at all?
So, Mr. Shaw. We have recourse if they start selling off any of this land and things like that?
Yeah, it's contained within the conditional use permit. If they start doing that, then you pull their conditional use permit.
So it is just one tank. They have, we reference, we call gasoline class one, diesel class two. So there is just one tank. Do you know if it's diesel or gasoline?
Diesel with a big truck, yeah, okay. All right. Thank you. You answered my question, Mr. Solberg. Pressures?
Are you okay with that, Tim, Mayor?
I am. Okay. I'll make the motion to approve with the conditions. Been moved to approve the permit for the above-ground fuel tank at twenty-four thirty-eight Main Avenue West. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jurdabek. Been moved in seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number twelve, city administrator's report. Mrs. Fisk.
Good evening, President and Commissioners. I have a few items and then I'm gonna have a couple people come up and give you more detail on a couple of things that they're working on. The first thing, stone planning, those are the people that are doing, they got the RP for the Expo Center. They're gonna be up here on the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth of this month. Callie and Courtney are reaching out to everybody to get all the groups and players and people together, get as many people as possible to meet with them while they're up here. So I know some of you have already gotten an email, but if you have any questions, just call to Callie or Courtney, because they know the schedules. But they're keeping them pretty busy, so that's where they're kinda hopping in and out. So they've got a really good schedule going for them. A reminder, the offices are closed Friday for Good Friday. We are open Monday. Let me see. On the twenty-ninth, we're gonna have a special meeting. If you remember, to talk about the outcomes and recommendations from the special assessment forums. And so we will have information together and hopefully get that sent out prior to the meeting so you can review it. And if you have additional questions, you can either let us know or ring those up at the meeting. We'll also be sending information out to the public so that the public can attend and hear the outcomes and so on and so forth. Melissa's out this week, Monday through Wednesday, at a civic plus training with some other department heads. So when she gets back, we'll be getting into the details of that and getting that moving The next thing I have is the twenty-fifth is Bring Your Child to Work Day. And our CDC committee, I don't even know what your acronym stands for. Okay, that one, the EEC, there's too many of them. They worked on a different idea for that, rather than you bringing your kids to work. They came with different ideas to engage children and understand what different people do at City Hall and they made it kind of a contest. So since Jenna's involved with that, I will let Jenna come up and talk to you about that.
Good evening, Commissioners. As Tina said, in conjunction with National Bring Your Daughters and Sons to Work Day, we are doing a city government career day. We've opened up this opportunity to students at Cheney and Liberty Middle Schools. So you may have seen, there was an article that was put in the Pioneer for this, so we could get students who are interested to apply. We do have a total of twenty-four students who will be attending the event, and it'll be a full day for them, hosted at the West Fargo Library. And we have different departments who have collaborated to come up with different ideas for the students. I don't wanna give too much away, but a couple of the things that we'll be doing is they will have a, an area of land that they will be city employees and they will choose to develop it. So then the staff will work with them to say, okay, what things do we need to think about here? How are we going to get water? Is this going to be commercial? Will it be residential? And kind of walk them through that process. The police will come in and do a dog bite, so they'll have the dog bite one of the other officers. The fire department will come in and do a fire extinguisher training. So all of the students will actually get to use the fire extinguisher, weather pending, and be able to use that. And then the communications department will also be having them write a mock news release as well to kind of incorporate some of those skills. So we'll be offering them lunch and having city employees come in for lunch and we will have that catered in. Normally, we do an employee lunch once a month as a fundraiser, and because Public Employee Recognition Week is the first week in May, we're going to be utilizing this day as a public employee recognition lunch and having staff come in, and in that way, they'll be able to network with the students as well. Any questions on the day? All right. Thanks.
I only have a couple more items. One of them would fall maybe under correspondence, but all of you received a copy of the letter and map that was sent out to all people within the Eagle Woods, second through seventh editions. That was put together by Moore Engineering and given to Courtney late Thursday, and she managed to get it out Friday and Saturday. She got the rest in the middle Saturday morning, but she worked very hard to try and get that out. So we plan to talk and in the future, we're gonna make sure we get that together far earlier. We were waiting for them and it was just kind of one of those things where it just happened at the end, but the information did go out, so everybody's aware of it. The last thing I have is with the Cheyenne Street project, there had been discussion with all of you about, now that we're doing Thirty-second to Fortieth Avenue, can we keep Fortieth Avenue open as an access? And what would the costs or the repercussions be of that? Dustin and I think Chris reached out to the contractor, got some basic preliminary numbers. It isn't an official item, that's why it's not an official item on the agenda, but Dustin can give you the overview of what they think their least cost would be and, or what they think the cost will be, so that you can give us direction if you want us to pursue this or not.
Thank you, Tina. President Darnus, members of the commission. So as of Friday evening, we did finally receive something in writing from the contractor indicating a cost for the change to keep east-west traffic open on Fortieth Avenue. Their initial cost is roughly two hundred thousand dollars. Now, we didn't receive a lot of detail justifying the twenty or so items that are changing. So at this point, we're gonna continue to work with the contractor, get more detail to justify each of these cost increases, and then also continue to work on things like the completion dates, where we are gonna, at this point, we're still striving to have the intersection open throughout the entire duration, with the first phase being done by June fifteenth, which would be basically the southern portion of the intersection, and then finish the work on the north side of the intersection by July fifteenth. So, but there's a lot of components to evaluate at this point, but just wanted to, since we finally got a cost, we wanted to bring that forward as an update. Hopefully, we can get that narrowed down, even reduce this cost, but at this point, two hundred thousand dollars, plus or minus, is what we're looking at. So with this, I'll answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Scott?
No, but I'm getting hit already by a lot of people saying, you gotta leave that open. I don't like the two hundred thousand dollar price tag they're throwing at us. I'm not an engineer or contractor, it seems a little high, but I know that people down there, they don't want the traffic going through their neighborhoods and they need a way to get east and west.
I would say that when we first started talking about this, Chris and I were bouncing some things off each other, and our first guess at what this might cost was a hundred and fifty to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you know, just in that particular range. But again, I don't have that itemized detail of why it's increasing by that much per item.
Mr. Simmons?
Dustin, who's the contractor?
The Coda Ground.
Coda. I know that, I just wanted Wendy to make sure that the public knows that as well.
Absolutely.
That's a lot of money, first of all, and I think we should have some hole or something here if they want, I'm not saying threaten them for future contracts, but the one thing I don't understand is why, I mean, to me, it's a no-brainer from the beginning. Why was it not in the original, that we were not, who in their right mind can say that we can shut that down with Cheyenne Street from Fortieth to Thirty-second shutdown, with Fifty-second in Fargo shutdown? How could we not, how could we not have that open? How are all those people gonna get around? So, I mean, I'm just frustrated, kind of that it shouldn't have been done a long time ago, but honestly, and I'm not blaming anybody, but these are these little things that we've gotta really work on, I guess, to get them, and in this case, we, I think you folks are right, we have to do it, we have no choice. I've been jumped, I mean, we have no choice what the cost is, I think we have to do it. And they deserve that. They deserve to get through there. I don't know how they would get out, honestly.
Well, okay, I'm gonna take the question of
I drive it every day, I can give you a tour.
Yeah. So the question of why wasn't this contract bid like this? You know, why wasn't the design put together, keeping the east-west traffic open at all times? Uh,
times? Boiled down to time and money. You know, keeping the intersection open, one of the things I mentioned that when we talked about this last meeting was the ability to mainline pave and then get the utility worked on in an open area when it's all shut down. So I think, again, blinders on, looking through the tunnel of, we want to get in and out as quick as we can and save cost. The feasibility was there that we could detour around. Now, 52nd Avenue is open to Veterans Boulevard until this June 15th completion date. So the detour is set up to go on Ninth Street West, which is a half a mile to the west of the project, and utilize then 52nd Avenue to get over to the east as well as 30th, as well as 32nd Avenue to get over to the east. Albeit, that is not as convenient or optimal as keeping the east-west traffic open. But again, with that tunnel vision, if you will, of saving cost and being as quick as we can, that's why we proceeded with shutting down the intersection altogether.
But the only way to get to 32nd would be to go through all those neighborhoods on Ninth Street, right?
It's to go through Ninth Street, which is a collector roadway, but yes, traveling right through a neighborhood.
Yeah, I, yeah, I just think we need to keep it, regardless of the circumstances, we need to keep it open. That would be my opinion.
My biggest concern is in the routing, you know, when you're routing it by Aurora Elementary and Legacy Elementary, both of those speed zones are 15 miles an hour in front of that. The public is going to be frustrated by that first and foremost, and I think it's going to put a lot of pressure on our police department also to be out there monitoring because I've been driving it now for whatever, a week or so, and the public is not driving at 15 miles an hour past those schools. They absolutely are not. So that's my biggest concern is the safety on those two particular elementary schools. Thank you. And this, you know, you've gotten calls, we've all gotten calls. This is the second-most calls I've gotten to any item in the city of West Fargo since I've joined you on the Commission. I would guess I'm up over 30.
I'll say kudos to the police. They've been out there, I have grandkids, they go to Aurora and pick them up, and I've seen a couple of them out there, and they've been busy because you're right, people are zipping right along down there, and it's going to be worse when you drive even more traffic there.
This morning, when I was approaching the school zone, you know, they have one of those, you're driving this speed or whatever, the car in front of me was driving 27 miles an hour past the school. And like I said, that's, all these elementary kids ages, that just scares the, you know, scares me.
So do you need our approval to move on? Is that what you're asking for, or any...
At this point, I wanted to take comments. If there was a concern with proceeding, knowing that the cost implication is as high as it is, then, you know, that would certainly be a cause to stop, go back to the original plan. But I think at this point, we're just wanting to communicate the update that we received as of Friday night. We will continue to, again, require and vet through all the justification for each specific line item that is changing, and that we will bring a final change order document to this body for review and approval.
Just get them down to $25,000 and...
We'll rely on your communication and your negotiating skills, Dustin, to do the best you can for us. And then please do get back to us because it's important to our taxpayers and certainly to the Commissioners up here, so, thank you.
Absolutely.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mrs. Fisk?
I just have one final thing. I just want to let you know that the lovely lady that does her minutes, it's her birthday today.
Oh, wow.
So we want to wish Courtney a very happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
And other than that, I'm done. Thank you.
Are we going to sing the song?
Get you a dance.
Is there anything for the good of the order from the Commissioners?
Move to adjourn.
Whoa, you're out of order? I've got one thing. So last week, while we were experiencing our blizzard and our flooding, had some interesting phone calls. But I absolutely have to thank the police department, the fire department, the engineering department, public works, public works, and public works, because Chris and I, I think he probably is starting to shut off his phone when I call him. But Melissa from Communications, you know, Emergency Services, Pierre, and all the planning leading up to, you know, when we were going to experience potential overland flooding and the like, the communications and the collaborations between our department has phenomenal. And it was a real pleasure to witness it and then to see the execution of those things we had to do. And also kudos to our city administrator as being the lead of all of those. But I got a call, was it Thursday or Friday, Chris, do you remember? From the Reed Township president. And of course, we've dealt with Reed Township and some of the issues that we've had, what we've had, but they're good people. And the adjectives that he used to describe our city workers on helping the Reed Township people up around the airport was fabulous and wonderful, and I think he used fabulous the third time, or second time. So I just, again, Chris, you're dealing with a full-scale blizzard, flooding up at the northwest part of the city, and I couldn't be prouder of all of the departments worked together, the police department and the fire department helping us monitor the rivers and the potential for ice jams. For this new Commissioner, it's been a real pleasure. So thank you all to pass that on to all your departments, please. Is there anything else for the good of the order? Commissioner Simmons?
Move to adjourn.
Is there a second? Commissioner Jurdavich, been moved and seconded, we stand adjourned. Thank you.
Have fun.